Need to add election of officers to our agenda. We'll do that under. The first item under new business, we would add election of officers. And then I also need to mention that it was reported in the Times News that the Washburn Project, which is on Tracy Grove, was going to be on our agenda for this planning board meeting. However, there were some site changes by the developer and it's going to be at the February. So if you're here to make public comments about the Washburn Project on Tracy Grove, that was moved to the February fourteenth.
That's correct. February fourteenth, four o'clock in this room next month, planning board. They missed a deadline with some of their submittal requirements. And so they were not able to stay on this agenda and they got bumped to the next agenda. So thanks for pointing that out. We did remove the signs and we'll repost it at the site. We also put it on the website that that item had been moved, but we were unable to, you know, republish or send out letters to everyone again. So again, if you're here for the Washburn Track Project, that will be heard next month, not tonight.
With that being said, we could have a motion to approve the agenda of adding the election of officers under the first item of new business.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. Now we have the approval of the minutes from our December thirteenth meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read through those?
Yes.
We have a motion.
Move to approve the minutes as in the packet.
We have a second. Second Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved from the December thirteenth meeting. We have no old business. Our first item under new business is election of officers. I currently chair, John is vice chair. Let's do this. Prior to that, we have some new members on the board. Why don't you introduce yourselves?
Hello, everyone. I'm Fred Nace, resident on Main Street and vintage photo scan on Fifth Avenue, just off Main Street.
Welcome. So you're appointed by city council?
City council.
Excellent. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Stu Glassman and I'm president of Hendersonville for thirty-two years and I'm a retired surgeon.
Welcome. Alrighty. We would tender then, I guess, some nominations. This is a board process. Does it require public input? Okay, this is a board process. I'm currently chairing, John is vice chair. I'm willing to serve once again, if you'll have me. But obviously, if there's somebody else interested.
Mr. Oh, I nominate John Robertson to be chair for current year.
Jim.
Jim, Jim.
Do we do vice chair at the same time or is that a separate?
You could do a slate, a.
And that's the only two officers, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. John, are you willing to?
I'm willing.
Okay.
Second then.
So we have a nomination then for myself as chair and John as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. That's out of the way. All right, first item on the original agenda, my screen went dead, I'm sorry. It up there is the Fleming Street rezoning. And somebody's gonna, Tyler, you could explain that to us. Oh, I think you, I think you got it. Try again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. City of Hendersonville is receipt of an application for zoning map amendment or a standard rezoning from the property owners of ten twenty-seven Fleming Street. The applicant is Andrew Riddle of Riddle Development. The property owner is our Hunting Creek Associates LLC. You can see the PIN number on your screen. The overall project acreage is three point three acres. The existing zoning on the side is MIC SU, which is medical institutional cultural special use. Bozoning is MIC, medical institutional cultural, which is just a conventional standing or standard zoning district. Under the current zoning, any changes to the site plan or uses under the current zoning would require that the applicant go through the conditional zoning district process. The applicant is requesting to rezone the parcel from the conditional zoning district into a condition or conventional zoning district. If rezoned to MIC, all uses within that district would be allowed on this parcel and all site plans would be reviewed by staff unless they exceed one of the square footage triggers outlined in our zoning ordinance. For example, if it went over fifty thousand square feet, that would automatically trigger the conditional zoning district process. If rezoned, there will be no binding site plan, list of uses or conditions. The City of Hendersonville zoning ordinance states that during the standard rezoning process, an applicant is prohibited from discussing the specific manner in which they intend to develop or use the sites. Just keep that in mind. So this is a vicinity map. As you can see, the subject parcel is highlighted and has the little marker on it. It is just north of Party Hospital. It's in that medical office corridor on Fleming Street. It's relatively close to downtown, so within walkable distance. The high school is to the east and more traditional single family neighborhoods are to the west. To the north, you can see Asheville Highway, which is or US twenty-five, which is a major entry corridor into the city. And there's a vast amount of commercial uses along that corridor. So these are some existing site photos of how the site looks today. Top left are probably what y'all are most familiar with, which is the existing medical office building that's on the parcel today. In the middle is the view at Facifern Court, Fleming Street. Top right is an existing single family home on the site that is abandoned. And then the two bottom photos are just showing some of the property that's vacant and not developed at this time. So parcels to the north are mostly zoned C three highway business. The C three zoning district follows the intense commercial corridor along Asheville Highway. Asheville Highway is a major artery and gateway to the city and provides frontage for a wide range of businesses with varying types of goods and services. To the west, the parcel is bordered by residential uses, zone R six, high density residential and R fifteen and R ten medium density residential. Most of the residential uses in this area are comprised of single family dwellings on small lots. Parcels to the east are zoned MIC. PID and the majority of the uses in this area are professional and medical offices. This area is intended to be a corridor that supports Party Hospital. To the south, parcels are zoned MIC, CCD, which is medical office institutional institutional cultural conditional zoning district. And PCD, Plan Commercial Development, which contain Party Hospital and the, what was called the Fleming Street Medical Office Building to the south, which came through the CCD process last year. Future land use, the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, future land use map designates this parcel as urban institutional and neighborhood activity center. Parcels located to the north, east and south are also designated as urban institutional and neighborhood activity center. The urban institutional in this area is due to the proximity of downtown and the prevalence of medical institutional or educational institutions in this area. Most prominent being Party Hospital and Hendersonville High School. The neighborhood activity center designation follows the entry corridor along Asheville Highway. The parcels to the west are designated as urban institutional and medium intensity neighborhood. The majority of this area is comprised of single family dwellings, which is the primary recommended land use under this designation. Some of the existing single family residences are located in the urban institutional designation in blue there. So I mentioned, the goal of urban institution is to create a cohesive, well-defined urban campus for medical and educational institutions with supportive office and residential uses that is integrated with downtown. The goal of Neighborhood Activity Center is to concentrate retail and dense walkable mixed-use nodes located at major intersections in order to promote a sense of community and a range of services that enhance the value of Hendersonville's neighborhoods. The primary and secondary recommended land uses are on the screen. This parcel is considered to be in a priority infill area, which is defined as areas that are considered to be high priority for the city to encourage infill development on remaining vacant lots and redevelopment of underutilized and underdeveloped properties. The parcel is also in an activity node, which are locations that are planned as high-density pedestrian-friendly community focal points. Although downtown will be Hendersonville's primary urban focal point, the activity nodes will act as satellite nodes that provide the benefit of urban mixed-use development and walkable design to neighborhoods and regional retail centers outside of downtown. So as you'll see on your screen, there was a special use permit for this property established December seventh, two thousand and six. The subject property was comprised of four individual parcels, which were later combined. The properties were zoned C three highway business, R six high-density residential and MIC SU for medical institutional cultural special use. That special use was, let's see. So you can't see that, but the blue on the bottom right corner is where that special use was for the original initial approval. That was also for a medical office building that was never built. So. Let's see. The zoning map from the two thousand and six approval is shown on the screen. You can see the initial approval is outlined with the hashed markings. That shows the four parcels that were in the original approval. Let's see, special use permit was to allow for the construction of two medical office buildings totaling twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy square feet. One was a two-story eleven thousand two hundred and twenty square foot building and the other one was to be a seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty square foot building. The entire development, including the existing eleven thousand five hundred and eighteen square foot medical office building would have totaled thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet. And this is an outline of what, basically, I'm going to go over an amendment to that special use permit. And this amendment basically added that small parcel to the bottom left. So we'll go through that. So you'll have a better sense of what is the amendment actually was. So in two thousand and eight, the property owners petitioned the city council to amend the special use permit. The amendment was approved on July tenth, two thousand and eight. The amendment included the rezoning of a zero point five two acre lot from R six high-density residential to MIC SU. The new parcel was proposed to house a two-story, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six square foot medical office building. This brought the overall development to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square feet. The additional parcel would take the development from four to five parcels in total. And the development was proposed to be constructed in four phases. Special use permit also issued the following uses: office, business, professional and public, professional services, consistent with the purpose of this classification, and retail stores, consistent with the purpose of this classification. And as a condition of that approval, the applicant had to combine all four parcels into one parcel to show unified development. And that one parcel is what is existing today. So these five parcels make up what is now the three point three acre parcel today. The development was never constructed. The only existing building on the site existed prior to the special use permit or the amendment. The deadline for completed construction on this project was December twelfth, twenty fifteen. So any new amendments to the site under the current zoning or any amendments to the site would be required to go through the current zoning process and be a conditional zoning district. And with that, the applicant is in attendance. We did have some changes to the motion. So you should have a printed out motion in front of you today. And we did receive one pre-submitted public comment for this project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody on the board have any questions for city staff?
If I may add one thing, and I mentioned this to Tyler, but for what it's worth, and I don't know any details of this, but just from doing a site visit, it appears that this site was once part of the Facifern School for Girls. And so just to add that to our kind of staff analysis that there was some history to this site. There's still a monument there. Looks like it was part of a driveway, stone monument with a plaque that states that that was there. So just throwing that out there so that we've acknowledged that historic use as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for staff, for city staff? Okay, if we have no questions, would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, hello, everyone.
Go ahead and state your name and address.
Andrew Riddle. I live in Flat Rock, one oh nine Glengarry Drive. And I would like to yield my time to some of the neighbors just to ask some questions. If they have any questions, I would like to hear those out and then be able to address those if I'm permitted to do that.
So the process was, we had a neighbor, was there a neighborhood competitive? There was no neighborhood.
No.
We'll open up public comment, Mr. Riddle.
Sure.
And at that time, they can address the board and then we can get answers for their questions from you. I don't mind having a discussion, but really the process is we'll open up public comment. For folks in the room that want to speak, they can address the board.
Okay.
Open up public comment on the Zoom meeting. Let them address the board. I'm going to read the one comment from Mr. Zach Forrest on Facifern Court. And then we'll address some of their issues. So if you don't have any comments for the board, then we'll go ahead and move on to that process.
Yeah, let me make some comments and let me turn my cell phone off first.
One thing. I'll just take this time to reiterate that the applicant is prohibited from discussing any potential development on the site, but they certainly can state their reasoning for the application. Maybe why it's in line with the comprehensive plan or anything along those lines.
Exactly. Because this is a rezoning and any of the permitted uses in that rezoning would be allowable. Please don't discuss, if you have plans for the property, please don't discuss those. Because we have to consider every use when we rezone the property.
Okay. Well, it's hard for me to know what that means. It's hard for me to tell the entire truth of what I'm trying to do. But I'm going to kind of do that anyway, because I feel like that's the only way I can do it. Long story short, six months ago, I was contacted by the owners of the three point three acres. They said, Andrew, we know you develop properties. We know you sell properties. We need to unload this property and we need to sell it. So I met the owner's representative at the property and said, wow, this, this looks great. This is an, this is an ugly building that needs help. And those are the buildings I like, right? So the existing medical facility, I think that you all are familiar with, the ten twenty-seven Fleming Street. I looked at the building. It's underutilized. There is a current tenant in the basement or in the bottom level. She's been there for seven, eight years. The building had physicians in the building. It's, I can't recall the actual physicians, but I wasn't here, I could probably tell you, but I'm nervous. So I looked at the building. I said, man, this looks like a great project. How about? I want to buy this medical building, this ten thousand, eleven thousand square foot medical building. The big brown building that's beside the Save More parking lot. But I don't want the rest of the property. I just want the building and the parking lot. The rest of the property, we can sell it as is. Okay, I just want the medical building and the parking lot. I thought that was kind of a slam dunk. So drew up an offer to purchase. We made an agreement. I get it surveyed and what I would like to do, does this have a pointer on it?
You can green.
All right, so. It's one acre. If I draw a line down here and then over, just that little section. It's actually point nine eight acres. I'm wanting to subdivide that point nine eight acres away from the rest of all this property. Draw up an offer to purchase, go to the attorney, get it surveyed. The surveyor goes to record the deed. Bam, we got a roadblock. Can't buy it. Because in two thousand and five, this three point three acres had a conditional zoning district ordinance tied to it. It was going to be three additional buildings at ten thousand square feet. That was in two thousand and five by name of Jim Hall. Some of you may know him. Well, it never got built. Well, it got extended. It got extended until finally in two thousand and fifteen, the site plan expired. Okay, the site plan expired, but the zoning didn't expire. So it continued on. So I was told by the folks at the city who are great to work with, they don't tell me what I want to hear, but it's the facts. Okay, it's the facts. Here's what we got to do. You can't buy the building. You got to go through this process. And I said, okay, all right, what do we have to do? Fill out the application. And here we go. All I want to do is buy the building and make it nice. That's all. There's no changes to the parking, no changes. It's just new paint, okay? The rest of the property, I don't care what it's zoned. You can zone it a playground. I don't, I don't, I don't have any interest in that property. I've got some ideas, what it could be the best and highest use, but however you want to zone that property is up to you folks. I'm indifferent. All I want to do is to be able to improve that space and put good quality tenants in there and fix that building up. I've been out there a lot. I've studied it. You know, I've got homeless people sleeping next to it. I got them sleeping with charging up their cell phones at the building. The police, I've talked to the police. They're eternally grateful that someone cares about this space and would like to improve it. Get the kudzu out, tear the parking lot up, repave it, rerooft it, get the leaks out of it and make it a, and make it a nice facility. So that's the truth. Maybe I told too much. Maybe I told too little. But I just want to buy the building and fix it up. And this is what we got to go through. And I'm an open book. So any questions you've got? I'm all ears and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Sure, go ahead.
Andrew, you say you don't really care about the zoning on the remainder, but your application is in fact for MIC zoning for the entire three point three acres. Is that correct?
And that is correct. And that's correct because of my lack of knowledge and what to do, okay? It's currently zoned, makes, it's currently zoned medical institutional cultural. So with my feeble brain, I said, well, how about we just keep it the same? Okay? I'm not asking, again, I don't want to beat the dead horse here, but however you want to rezone the remaining property, I don't have a, I don't have an idea. Go ahead.
Will you own the entire parcel?
I am looking to own, answer's no, no, not. Over three point three acres, I am looking to subdivide one acre out of the three point three. Tyler, I sent you an email five minutes ago. That's what I was doing. It shows a an outline of what I'm trying to do. Okay, so if you look at this one more time, it's just a corner. It's just the parking lot of the building. The remaining two point three, seven acres is discretionary. I don't have a say in what that goes for.
And it will still be owned by the person you're looking to purchase.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And I must tell you that I'm the listing broker trying to sell it.
Trying to sell the.
I'm a commercial real estate agent and I sell commercial properties.
Trying to sell the whole parcel or the three acres?
Only.
Two acres.
Yes, that's correct. I'm trying to sell the remaining part. I'm trying to buy one acre and the rest of it be sold.
Oh, I don't know. But the applicant is, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? You could ask the applicant that.
Question.
Barbara, you could ask the applicant.
My question is, why isn't the property owner here since it involves the entire parcel? Why wasn't he the applicant?
So you can have an applicant and you can have a property owner. The property owner has to sign an application for a CCD. In this case, this is a RZO, a regular standard rezoning, in which case the property owner actually doesn't have to sign or agree to a rezoning unless it is a down zoning. In this case, we actually would be increasing, the request is to increase the permitted uses associated with the property. So it would not be considered a down zoning, in my opinion. So the city actually has the authority to zone the property as they see fit without necessarily the consent of the property owner.
But the.
Would be.
Did sign the application.
Right, or did sign the application for to be.
You had a copy of your package.
MIC. And it would be good to know, would be helpful information to know what the property owner, you know, desired as far as zoning goes. But just from a legal standpoint, the city has the authority to zone property as it sees fit, as long as it's not considered a down zoning. Yes, sir.
If the owner of the other property has signed the documents, he's aware of the situation. Assuming that he feels that that's probably in his best interest as well. Go back to the other zone. If he wanted to do, this is exclusive only for the acre, only for Andrew's acre. So the other parcel, the other part of it is going to remain with the SU.
So current, the request is for the entire parcel to be, to go back to MIC. Again, there is some flexibility here because the city has this authority, the rezoned property, that if you wanted to discuss how the rezoning may be shaped differently than what is requested, you can have that discussion. We can kind of guide that discussion. If you have some ideas, if there's some problems that you're looking to solve and coming up with different alternatives, we can respond to that as staff to try and guide that conversation. But the request is for the entire parcel.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
At this point, we're going to open up public comments on this issue. If you're in the room and you want to speak about this rezoning, can you just raise your hand so we can get an idea of how many folks want to speak? Okay, nobody in the room wishes to speak about this rezoning. What about on the Zoom call? If you want to speak, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you. No, just go ahead. If nobody in the room wishes to speak, we'll just go ahead and. Yeah, I'm gonna read, uh, Zach, is, is, is Mr. He's also on the call. I'll let him, I'll let him make his own comments then if he wants to. You know, use, use his document and read it, or he can, you know. Yeah, if he's on the call, we'll just, uh, let's go ahead and unmute.
Okay.
Mr. Forrest first.
Uh, Mr. Forrest, you've been unmuted. You go ahead and state your name and address for the record and go ahead with your comment.
Hey, good afternoon. Uh, Zach Forrest here, uh, five twenty Fasfern Court. I live in the neighborhood that this is, uh. That this proposed rezon is, uh, residing in here. Uh, so the zoning application details, as, as it's very clear for everyone here. Appear to be a departure from the submitted proposed rezoned map. Uh, so the request states to separate that acre containing the existing medical building from the surrounding parcels, and this is. Not in this proposed map that we're all looking at right here. So the map shows a change to the entire property. Including the residential land or previously zoned residential land, uh, and then, and. In our, inside of the neighborhood that, that we live in, um, that is intended for residences. Um, so the requister, uh, in the original request stated the intent. Uh, which is to revert that zoning back to pre-two thousand and six, which if you look at page twenty-six. Based on the findings, it follows, there's a, that three point three acre that is, uh, present today was that, uh, five total parcels. And two of those were on the highway or on the Fleming Street side, and the rest of the other remaining three were in Fasfern. Uh, Fasfern Court, they were all, uh, they were all labeled as R six or high density residential, so. Um, it's, it's a concern, um, that we're going from what was originally residential to special use, of course, but. The request is to take it back to pre-two thousand and six, which is. Well, in, in fact, in fact, here in logic, it's, it's R six or high density residential, so. The proposed rezon map does not appear to be compatible, also with the surrounding uses, given that rezon would remove this. Residential area permanently and replace it with, well, more medical institutions, restaurants, basically whatever they wanna build, right? That's the whole point of MIC. Um, so I, I respect that the city has planned for the surrounding areas to, uh, contain medical offices. Uh, but the second use of MIC is housing, and the only way people will be showing up to these offices at all is if we have housing. So, um, removing more originally residentially zoned land is, is just, it's not a benefit to the community. And does not contribute to Hendersonville being a welcoming location for the community residents. So. The bottom line, if, if, if zoned for MIC, there'll be nothing stopping, um, the owners of this building. Uh, from building restaurants or other major disturbances in the neighborhood. Uh, so this proposal is going from R six high density residential, so a neighborhood. Uh, to a full-on Taco Bell or KFC, and I use these examples because. The owner is the CFO of a company that builds these exact restaurants. So there's, there's a, a lot of concern from the neighborhood, and I'm sure my other neighbors will echo a lot of the sentiment. Um, but it, it, what I'm hearing though is it sounds like the applicant is basically fine with. They're, they don't seem to care what the rest of its rezoned is, so. It seems pretty obvious and clear to me what the solution is, is to subdivide this back out. Uh, make it so that this individual can buy that one and a half acre or one acre and, and make it look awesome, which would be fantastic for this area. And then zone everything back over to residential so that we can have residences. And, uh, and have, have folks that actually go to these, uh, medical institutions. So. Anyway, that's, that's basically what, all I had to say. Um, and yeah, thanks again. I appreciate the, uh, planning board and city council, whoever's listening. I appreciate you letting us, uh, letting us speak. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Okay, if you're on the Zoom call and you'd like to make, um, comments, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll unmute you.
Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. Uh, I really appreciate, uh, Andrew Riddle's openness about the situation. That's very refreshing, uh, but he is a local person and he understands that we are. Uh, all neighbors here and it's, it's very helpful. Um, the basic intent of the request seems clear and sensible as Mr. Riddle, as Mr. Riddle has suggested. And is stated in the application, and indeed is seen as a signage in front of the property. That this would be to enable and upgrade to the existing medical facility building and its parcel. And this is a facility that has served thousands of local residents. And has a special quality in its location within a grove of trees. That provides a calming, welcoming environment for those arriving for procedures and treatments. As my family has in the past. And as the application states, there's no expectation of impact on the environment, which would otherwise be a concern. And a- as Mr. Forrest has said, the application does state a specific request. To allow the existing medical building to operate as it is and to revert. The remaining acres to the, the prior zoning, and those include the C three and R six. So, um, if, if, if revert, if this property reverted to those original. Zoning for those parcels, there would be very few issues. But the, the problem is we here have here is a stated rezoning to MIC. The question is, is there an option to restore the R six parcels to that zone? Because that would solve a lot of, uh, potential issues. Because, um, a- a- as the neighbors have, have spoken, that if it's MIC. All prior parcels would permit a wide range of uses and not all would be compatible with the adjacent. Established residential neighborhood. And this neighborhood might be described as workforce housing. Which is a category of housing with limited availability in the city. And city council has expressed concern with preserving existing neighborhoods. So it is important to avoid actions that compromise the quality and integrity of such neighborhoods. And I would clearly state that Andrew Riddle, a local developer, is sensitive to the issue of compatibility. And has worked with adjacent neighbors on his projects in the past, as you have observed. Including preservation of trees and compatible design. However, Mr. Riddle may not be the future developer here. And that is, leaves, uh, things up in the air. I would point out that, uh, the messaging for special use, uh, in the, was sometimes broad and unclear. But the common understanding was that if a permit expired, the property will remain as it is. And any other project would, uh, have to start at the beginning again. And then, uh, one more point to, as Mr. Manley has, has, uh, stated. This was the location of the historic Fasfern School for Girls, and there's a stone pillar with the plaque. And there are other pillars, so one which is cautioned. That any impacts on those remnants might raise a hue and cry. Given the sensitivity about preserving historic elements in the city. But again, Mr. Riddle, in his projects, has demonstrated sensitivity and awareness to such. Historic assets in his award-winning projects. But as, uh, Mr. Forrest has expressed, the MIC's rezoning. May prove incompatible with the existing residential neighborhood, and that is something that you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch.
Jim, or Chairman, sorry, excuse me. Just wanna clear it up, um, some of the comments, just so that the board members are clear. Um, the application, as you saw in your packet, says revert to prior zoning slash MIC. The, and from speaking with the applicant, it's our understanding that, uh, the applicant was intending that. You know, they saw that this property was MIC special use, and I think that their intention by saying revert. Back was to, to take away the special use and just go to MIC. That's why they referenced the MIC. Uh, because it's been confusing, we have, uh, asked for clarification. Um, with the application prior to it going to city council, so we have a, a new application that has more. Uh, or less confusing language in it. So it's been referenced a few times that R six or C three might be. What it would revert back to, and it, it could, again, going back to what my statement earlier about the city's, um, ability to rezone property. Don't think that you could downzone it to R six without the property owner's consent. Uh, C three may be a possibility, MIC is a possibility. Um, but applicant can further clarify that the request is for the entire parcel to go to MIC.
It's not really a revert to anything. It's just applying for a new zone?
It's correct, but there was confusing language in the application, so that, we just wanted to make that, make that clear as possible.
Okay. Anybody else on the Zoom call, if you'd like to make? Use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you.
Hi, this is Jason Pfeifer. Um, I reside in the neighborhood just behind the proposed zoning area, so one zero zero. Five Fasfern Court and one zero zero nine Fasfern Court, and both those contiguous properties. Um, and as stated, the, and, and it's pretty much just echoing what Zach and Ken said, the current stated. Proposition of converting all that to MEC, I, I just can't agree with. I could, I could agree with parcelling it off as was suggested, but that's not really what's up for debate exactly right now. I can't agree with it because for various reasons that have been stated before, it doesn't really match the rest of the area. And if you were gonna drop this from MEC SU to MEC, I had, had no recourse to rebuild buffers near my houses. I, I wouldn't have any recourse. They could put the Taco Bell right in the corner there. Yeah, and I would also state that while we've shown pictures of the building being abandoned and, uh, the home that's also on the property being abandoned. The current owners are the ones who abandoned it, because when I moved in three years ago, that was actually a childcare center and a residence. Um, and they've just kinda left it go to pot. So, um. Yeah, I guess that's where I stand. I, I can't agree with rezoning currently, that whole property.
Thank you very much. And you, you live on Fasfern, was that your address?
Yes, uh, so I live, if you look at the, where the R six label is, I own that property and the one below it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else on the Zoom call, if you'd like to make comments, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature. And we'll unmute you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close, close public comments then. Um, open up our discussion here. Um, I, I do have one question for staff. How difficult, I mean, how diff- this is one flat right now, correct? One or five different flats, as it was prior to the special use.
It's a single tax parcel.
How difficult would it be to? Go to, to actually revert back to where, you know, three R six parcels, a highway mixed-use parcel and a MIC parcel?
So it would be a, considered a minor subdivision.
Oh, boy.
Um, we'd be looking at, uh, meeting minimum lot size, so I'm not sure if any of those. That were R six. Were a lot smaller than six thousand square feet, which could make, uh, uh, reverting back difficult. Looks like they're rather large, R six, so, um, probably not an issue there.
Those three green blocks were R six.
Yeah, I think this, we were discussing this, it looks like this may have been a split, one parcel that was split zoned. The back half being R six. And then this was a separate parcel that came up that had like a flag lot. And then this one here. So this one could potentially be difficult to, to recreate. There's some limitations on creating flag lots.
Does it matter that the comprehensive plan shows that area as urban institutional? Cause it's no longer in the comp plan, residential.
So, single-family attached and multifamily. Um, live-work units, those are all considered secondary recommended land uses in the urban institutional area. Um, again, the comprehensive plan is a, a guiding document, so you wouldn't necessarily be, um, uh, precluded from. You know, a rezoning, uh, that you've found to be consistent, or you could state that you think it's appropriate. Even if it is inconsistent with comprehensive plan, you have that authority, or city council has that authority.
Go ahead, John.
Is it impossible to cut out this one acre and zone it whatever? Because the remainder is no longer conforming to the zoning of special use? Why, why can't there be some considerations?
So that, that could have been done if this had gone through a, uh, conditional zoning district process. Then amendment to the site plan to, to create a subdivision, basically draw a line on the existing site plan. Um, and it would have just, it would have gone through a slightly different process, neighborhood compatibility meeting, tree board, planning board, city council. In this case, there was no neighborhood compatibility, just planning board and city council.
Was that discussed, uh, with the applicant as an option?
It was.
Recall that? Andrew?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking.
Because that may be the only way to pull this off where you're not upsetting the neighborhood too.
Well, upsetting the neighborhood, I'll drop the whole deal if I upset the neighborhood. I'm out.
I believe.
Okay, I don't wanna ruffle feathers here. When I first applied for this, and you guys are gonna have to stick with me on this, when I first applied, I said. I want to subdivide this one acre and the remainder of it revert to its original zoning. That's pre-two thousand and five conditional zoning district with this grand medical complex scheme. They said, well, what was the previous zoning? Said, I don't know. Probably residential, because the truth is, it needs to be residential. Right? It's right in town. You can walk to it, there's a grocery store, there's a hospital. It needs to be residential if it looks just like the houses around it. Not a, a bank building that's. That happens to be a thirty-eight unit apartment complex with lights everywhere. It needs to look like the houses next door. It needs to be residential. I thought this was gonna be an easy one. I really did. I walked out of the building and said, God, why is it so, come on? Okay, so. I don't know the best path forward, but, but, well, I, I do, but when I originally applied, I said, let's revert it back to the original zoning. Prior two thousand and five. Well, that changed. Um, I was asked to redo the application to what makes sense. I don't know what makes sense. But I know what abandoned building doesn't make sense. So therefore, it would be prudent, in my personal opinion. Um, I'm not an attorney, I don't know if that would help, but, but I'm not. If I could simply subdivide this building from the other acreage. And the city council have complete control over whatever it is. It will never be a Taco Bell. Okay? It's not enough traffic for a Taco Bell. But whatever the remaining acreage is, that the city council have complete troll, control over it. Through their conditional zoning district regulations. Does that make sense? I just wanna help the economy here and put some tenants in that are respectable and good. And get the homeless people away and fix the place up. So, with that being said. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Commissioner Blatt, to your point about, so a CZD would have been required in order to do a subdivision. Cause it would have been a change from the site plan, a significant change in the boundaries that triggers going back to the CZD process. Application we received was about reverting MIC.
I don't like that word revert.
Sure, but, agreed. There's clearly some confusion. But one possible outcome between planning board and city council could be that a legal description of the portion. In question that with the medical, the existing medical office and associated parking lot, legal description of that property. Um, be provided and that the application be clarified that MIC. Base zoning be applied to that portion of the existing parcel. The remaining portion of the parcel would stay under special use. It would have a split. It would have a split zone, single tax parcel. We have split zones that exist. I, I wouldn't say it's a, a very clean or ideal situation, but in these, this particular set of circumstances, it is an option. That you could consider.
Right. And the 2.3 acre remainder is still permitted for three buildings, although it's expired. So if anyone wants to build anything on it, they're going to have to come back anyway.
Yes.
And he's okay with that. I hope his clients who own it are okay with that. But I, I see a path forward to accomplish what you want here. Not tonight. But I don't think.
Can we amend the motion? I guess that's the question. Can we amend it? Can we amend the motion to?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we could amend the motion and send, send a recommendation to city council. They're huddling on it right now. Yeah. Cause, cause I do have a little bit of a problem with, with taking, you know, that R six and making it MIC. Because under the special use, everybody knew what it was going to be.
Right. Now we don't know.
It was medical buildings. Now we don't know it was any of those uses in NIC. And I don't, I don't know that the neighbors would like to see three 10,000 square foot buildings either, but somehow that passed 15 years ago. Right. That's what it was. It's not is because it expired. So we're back to square one with that. Plan. And I've encountered this on another piece of land I was involved with. Something never got built and we're stuck with some oddball zoning, special use on it. And we can't move ahead. It's a problem. We probably need to address this down the road.
Yeah, we were talking.
We were talking about that in our committee meeting. If the parcel doesn't get built on in its time, maybe it does need to revert to what it was, but that's for another day.
Right. And going back to a C Z D. Uh, and then carving out the sake of would probably be what a three month delay in getting this resolved?
Correct.
Yes.
They would have to apply for conditional zoning first. I mean.
Yep. Okay.
What, what we're talking about here is not conditional zoning. We're talking about split zoning.
Right.
Yeah, this would be MIC for this 0.98 acres. I'm, I'm open to a motion. Well, does that mean a timeframe? I mean, can it move ahead today that way?
So, um, I, I think there's a, there's a question. We're going to have to touch base with the city attorney on whether or not we can. Carve out with a legal description that the surveyors created for the 0.9 acres, 0.98 acres. A split zone. Description of said parcel because that's basically we'd be cutting out the, and what I'm concerned about is the cutting out. Property from the C Z D is by its nature a substantial modification in boundary, which would trigger the C Z D process.
Are you willing to work in the, over the next month if this? I'm not sure you have a choice because I don't see it passing. That's just my opinion. Yeah, I'm not in favor of rezoning the entire parcel. I don't know how the rest of the boards feel. We don't have a motion, first of all, so. We don't necessarily want a motion and a fail, you know?
Is there anything we can do tonight so that this can go before city council as planned next month?
We do have some other items on the agenda. Could we table this until later in the meeting and get maybe perhaps get, um, the city attorney? Yeah, if we could do that in the meantime, and perhaps come back to it so that we can get a recommendation for city council.
Don't we have to get the owner of the property?
No, they signed the application. This.
We would just vote to rezone the, the small piece, right?
So I don't, I mean, all recommendations.
Change the acreage on the, on the.
Yeah, changes the application. You'd have to get the owner.
And our recommendation to city council doesn't have to be what the applicant applied for either.
Right. We don't have to change that request.
We just need to, we just need to try and come up with a recommendation to city council. We need to know how to word the motion. We need to make sure that a split zoning on this piece of property is something that can legally be done. And that's why we need to check with.
Okay. Because we can direct.
The city attorney.
To get the legal description later.
So I'm going to recommend that we just table this conversation. Table it. Yep. Okay. Till a little later. Till a little later in the meeting, we'll come back.
A couple of points of clarification before, before we move on that when we. Come back to this, there's comments made about restaurants and Taco Bell and KFC. I want to clarify that restaurants are a special use in the MIC. That means they're subject to supplementary standards. The supplementary standards for restaurants in this particular location requires that a restaurant be. Access from confronting a minor thoroughfare, a minor thoroughfare or a major thoroughfare. Facifern Court, NOR Fleming Street are classified as such. And so a restaurant. Whether it be on the residential, formerly residential portion or anywhere on this site would not be permitted.
Right.
Unless the classification of one of those streets were to be changed to a minor thoroughfare or major thoroughfare.
But there are a lot of uses in the NIC.
There are other uses, uh, which.
Other than medical.
We didn't get to in the presentation, but I pulled them up. Another comments were made about it being appropriately used on for residential. Residential is still permitted under MIC along with these other ones. It's not. Exclusively residential, uh, like some other residential districts. Just wanted to point out, make a few, um, clarifications on some public comments that were made. And clarify that, you know, I could bell. By our zoning code would not be permitted under a standard rezoning. And single family and two family residential would be permitted.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification. Thank you. Hopefully we'll get you an answer tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, board.
All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which I no longer have in front of me because I scrolled down.
So the next item was, uh, the lighting ordinance. Stafford requests that we move up the addition and definition of micro distilleries, cideries and micro wineries to next on the agenda. If you would accommodate.
Yeah, for what reason?
Because Lou is out of the, the room.
Oh, because Lou's out of the room. Okay. Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and move up the zoning text amendment on additions and definitions of micro distilleries, micro cideries and micro wineries. With supplementary standards and additional uses. Alex is going to explain that.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning board members. Uh, planning staff is in receipt of a zoning text amendment application. From M and T Distiller, Distilling LLC. Okay. Um, the applicant is requesting that micro distilleries be added as a use in zoning districts that currently allow micro breweries. As either a permitted use or a permitted use subject to supplementary standards as outlined in article 16 of the zoning ordinance. In addition, uh, staff has three proposed recommendations. Those recommendations are the addition of micro distilleries. Micro cideries and micro wineries be added to the use definition and supplementary standards for micro breweries. The addition of standards to the existing supplementary standards for micro breweries. And last, the addition of two zoning districts, CMHU and Urban Village to zoning districts that currently allow micro breweries as a permitted use. Subject to supplementary standards. So here is a map that depicts the, um, various zoning districts. So in, um, outlined in the. Kind of teal area, it's hard to read the little map, uh, description there, but those are the proposed. Zone addition, like the two zoning districts that staff is proposing for, to add, uh, for micro breweries and micro distilleries. Which are Urban Village. And C, um, CHMU are here. The ones that are outlined in red. Are what's, um, districts that currently permit distilleries as a permitted use. So those are going to be in I one and, uh, PMD. So planned manufactured ring development. And then, um, all the, uh, districts that are outlined in black here are the districts that currently permit micro breweries as a permitted use. And I have them listed out to the side, um, in the text there. And I can always flip back to the map later on, once we keep.
I, I will clarify real quick that, um, micro breweries are also permitted in the red and the industrial. Along with breweries and distilleries, and I think hard cideries.
I think yes, you're.
They're all permitted in those, those red as well.
All right. So the zoning ordinance does not have a current definition for micro distilleries and, uh, micro cideries and micro wineries. But it does have a definition for micro breweries. And you can see that definition there. It's an establishment that engages in the production of malt beverages as defined in North Carolina general statute 18B dash 101. An annual production shall be less than 25,000 barrels. The zoning ordinance also does have definitions for distilleries, cideries and wineries. And they're all follow similar, um, uh, definition for micro breweries just, or just without the product, production limitation there on the barrels. So when trying to come up or define or, or through our research to have, um, to come up with a appropriate definition for micro. Distilleries and then looking at the other definitions for, um. Later on from micro cideries and, and micro wineries. Um, we first started with distilleries or micro distilleries. We, I, we looked through, um, one example, which is, um, since the, our. Definition, their current definition for micro breweries. In our zoning ordinance, which is an establishment that engages the production of malt beverage as defined in North Carolina general statute. And with that annual production shall be less than 25,000 barrels. I wanted to also look to see if I could find anything that had to do or any production limitation for micro distilleries. Just kind of general research and just started from where that kind of barrels per year came about for micro breweries. So the Brewers Association, uh, which is the brewing industry's leading trade group, uh, defines micro brewery. As a brewery that produces less than 15,000 barrels of beer per year and sells 75% of more of its beer off site. They also define some other subgroups which are brew pubs, taproom breweries and regional breweries. Most breweries produce less than 50,000 barrels per year to avoid third party distributors. Which would cause them to lose control of advertising and a significant part of their product. So I gave an example. Um, so Sierra Nevada, most people are familiar with, um, is actually, it's considered a regional brewery. It produces more than 15,000 barrels per year, but less than the max allowed, uh, under, uh, regional three, six million barrels annually. For some perspective, our local breweries around here, um, are generally pretty small ones that you kind of see around close to Main Street. Have a much smaller, um, production level and, um, I'll get through this in later slides, um, when we brought this in front of the downtown advisory board. But, um, they're very much smaller production level and doesn't even come close to our currently permitted 25,000 barrel, annual production barrel. Limitation. Uh, also, North Carolina, um, recognizes only one distillery type. So, um. There is no current definitions for and under our general statutes or ABC permitting. Doesn't have any kind of guidance or language or anything like that is referring to micro distilleries. So. We look to the American Craft Spirits Association, which is the only registered national nonprofit trade group representing the US craft spirits industry. Definition of kind of craft spirits and those they have it defined there as spirits produced in the US by licensed producers that. Have not more than 750,000 proof gallons. Or 394,379 liter cases annually. And I'll give you the proof, um, definition there of what it means by proof gallons. It's just a method of measuring. The alcohol, alcohol content of spirits and that's usually you'll find that, um, in association with, um, any type of, um, like distilleries. Just spiritous liquor. The local, um, distillery that's in Fletcher, um, Two Trees Distillery. To kind of give an example of their production level, they have this on their website, produces approximately 20 barrels, um, using the traditional 53 gallon whiskey barrel. Which versus the malt beverage barrel. So beer, like a barrel of beer is traditionally 31 gallons. So they use, uh, approximately produce approximately 20 barrels of aged product per day with a thousand gallon system. And that comes out to approximately 386,900 gallons, um, annually for their. The, the closest distillery, um, to our district, or to Hendersonville. And I can kind of, we'll all explain a little bit more why all of these types of production level numbers and research went into this. It had to do with some questions that came up. We took this in front of our, um, downtown advisory board. So the proposed definition, um, we have here is micro breweries, micro distilleries, micro cideries, micro wineries. As an establishment that engages in the production of malt beverages or spiritus liquors. Or hard cider or wine. It's as defined in North Carolina general statute 18B dash 101. With annual production shall be less than 775,000 gallons per calendar year of final product. Right now, our current, um, that 25,000 barrels, um, was that number that is associated with micro breweries. When you're talking about liquors, um, generally those are, uh. Spoken about in terms of gallons. And, um, we also wanted to calculate that using the 31 gallon, 31 gallon barrels that have to do like are associated with malt beverages. And also, um, to show that, that terminology of final product, um, there was some just, just, um. When talking about spiritus liquors, they talk about proof gallons. We kind of wanted to just to be the final product, um, of production product. And like I said. Lot of the, um, that it, that 25,000 barrels originally associated for micro breweries is, is, is of a lot. And a lot of the breweries that you see that we currently have in our zoning districts that are permitted or, um. Don't even reach or don't even get close to that level of production. The proposed supplementary standards, um, for micro breweries, um, we took, um. The proposed or the supplementary standards that were used in, um. Small scale manufacturing and added it to, um. The existing supplementary standards for micro breweries. So that is highlighted in green. Um, you can see E, F and G. F and G specifically. Kind of give, they talk about the reuse of existing buildings shall not exceed 20,000 square feet of building floor space. And a new construction shall not exceed 10,000 square feet of all building floor space. So really what that's doing is putting a little bit additional limitations on the square footage and size of buildings. Either the reuse of buildings or, um, if they were to build a, a new building. To have, um. Just some additional standards that we, that they would have to meet, um, for a micro distillery or micro cider, micro wineries. And these are standards that were taken from small scale that were not, um, part of micro breweries. Original supplementary standards. So we just added those in there, um, to address some concerns that, um, of maybe size and scale. Of being close to downtown, um, or Main Street, um, and kind of that hopefully we. Just through speaking with the various boards, um, and committees that we took these, this proposed, uh, definition and supplementary standards to. That was, was suggested. The proposed, so the third, uh, recommendation that, um, staff is proposing was to add additional zoning districts. So currently the zoning ordinance allows micro breweries as a use in the following zoning districts. So permitted use, so. Not subject to supplementary standards are currently allowed in PCD, C Z D, I one and PMD, C Z D zoning districts. And permitted uses, uh, permitted you subject to supplementary standards are in C one, C two, C three, CMU, GHMU and HMU. Staff is recommending extending the four micros, um, uses into two additional zoning districts. Which are commercial highway mixed use of CHMU and Urban Village and these. Um, and this will be for as permitted uses subject to the supplementary standards. So comprehensive plan consistencies, the comprehensive plan does not have a dedicated chapter on economic development. So staff looked at chapter eight, land use and development, um, for some guidance. And so future land use designations to be in. And so future land use designations to be impacted by this tax amendment would be business center, regional activity centers, downtown core, downtown support, urban institutional and high intensity neighborhoods. With the inclusion, so some of the downtown core goals would be for entertainment uses. Locations would be Main Street, Seventh Avenue, portions of Church Street and King Street. And it also talks about the inclusion of retail, restaurant and office uses as primary and or secondary uses. Chapter eight also establishes a goal to promote downtown as Hendersonville's central gathering place and a focal point for niche retailers and entertainment, cultural and civic uses. Chapter eight of the comprehensive plan establishes a strategy intended to reduce vehicle miles driven that encourage make use pedestrian friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. And also as a job creator, businesses such as micro distilleries or the four micros can contribute to viable employment within the mixed use areas highlighted throughout the comprehensive plan. And the this was brought before the downtown advisory board on their meeting December fourteenth. The discussion there was there was a conversation among the board that included questions regarding the capacity limitations in place. If there are no state standards like there are for micro breweries, so that's when all that research and kind of talk went into the annual production caps that we kind of covered a little earlier on. Several board members also inquired about it allowing to distilleries was too much if you already had several micro breweries downtown. They asked if there could be a limit in place for how many distilleries or micro breweries there should be downtown. And they recommended the review by the Economic Vitality Team, which is subcommittee and the addition of adding micro wineries as a This was also brought before the Planning Board Legislative Committee on their December twenty first meeting. The committee addressed the concerns from the downtown advisory board, which they expressed about too many establishments in downtown. The committee felt as though market forces and cost of startup would limit the widespread expansion of distilleries or cideries and thus prevent any perceived issues of having too many in one place. And there was a discussion around the term gallon referring to proof gallons or final product gallons. And that's where that that language came through on that proposed definition. And like that said, that clarification was made to refer to final product gallons. And the recommendation, the committee recommended adding hard ciderie to the proposal. The committee was favorable of the recommendation to include distilleries and cideries with the production limits and square footage limits as proposed as to expand the permitted use subject to supplementary standards to CHMU and urban village zoning districts. This was then brought to the Economic Vitality Subcommittee on January fourth, the the subcommittee discussed the updated memo and staff report. So we just submitted kind of what the after some more research from the legislative committee. And since the between the legis let downtown advisory board legislative committee, the additional research that went into that presented all that back to the Economic Vitality Subcommittee. And the subcommittee felt other concerns about too many establishments in the downtown area were addressed by the proposed addition of those supplementary standards taken from small scale manufacturing. And the recommendation, the subcommittee was favorable to propose definition and supplementary standards and didn't really have anything to add. They felt that their questions were answered or concerns were addressed. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I do know that the applicant is here as well. So if the board has any questions for staff, we're happy to answer those.
Anybody on the board have any questions for city staff Alex?
A quick question. We have a lot of advisory committees and what have you there. Don't we also have a business advisory committee?
Um, I believe we do.
Were they consulted in any way?
This did not go on their agenda, no.
The downtown advisory board looked at it. The legislative committee of this board looked at it and who else was it?
The Economic Vitality Subcommittee of the downtown.
Don't we have a isn't on Seventh Avenue, isn't there a distillery? It's a private club.
I don't know.
No, there's a there's a private club that has hard liquor.
The Brandy.
But they don't distill.
They don't manufacture, they don't manufacture spiritous liquid.
No.
Well, we got a lot of boards and I would think probably that one is going around the foreign here. You would want to be consulted too.
Sure. Thank you, Alex. Does the applicant have any comments they'd like to make? Is the applicant in the room? I heard they were. Yeah, come on up, state your name and address and let us know what you're thinking.
My name is Bill McConnell, eight seventy two Jackson Luke Road, Flat Rock. And representing the M and T Distilling, McConnell and Taylor. I've been here about thirteen years, just bringing in the heritage of a per se moon shining legally in the area. Got a lot of history here. A lot of people are leaving our area and traveling to Tennessee. We lose a ton of tourism in the city here. And we could be doing our own here and promoting the history and giving our people diversity of what they drink. Plus using local farmers and with apple orchards and stuff and growing and using their product to produce our product. And when it comes to like, I know Chad and he's own Two Trees. You know, we're looking at a family run distillery, hundred and fifty gallon steel. You average about thirty gallons. Two trees, they ship all over the world. We're not looking to do that. We're looking at foot traffic like Gatlinburg and the kitchen porch. And that's vital to bringing in business and not, you know, shipping all over the world. And it comes to the influx of distilleries in this area with the state tax rate at thirty percent, the excise tax. One bottle at twenty five dollars, you had to pay to stay to North Carolina ten dollars. So that keeps a lot of our business coming into these areas because of the tax rate. So I'm just looking to do something small, bring in some history and help out others and bring in more tourism to the county.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Did you want to make some comments, sir? Yeah, go ahead.
Joe Taylor, three ninety five Old Sunset Hill Road, Hendersonville. We actually made the proposal because the way the zoning is now, distilleries are only allowed to go into industrial areas. We talked with several rolltors and looked around. There's not much there in the areas that that there are there's own industrial really aren't areas and there's not much to rent. And you wouldn't have that foot traffic that we would like to have if we were allowed to to get on a main street or near main street or on Seventh Avenue, where we have that foot traffic. So that was why we originally submitted this to try to get that amendment changed. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay. We'll go ahead and open public comment since this is a zoning text amendment. And if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak about this text amendment, come forward and state your name and address. What about on the Zoom call? Do we have anybody on the Zoom call? You can use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to make public comments.
Not seeing any hands raised at this point.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comments and have our discussion then.
I'll note that the they received you you guys received updated motions printed out. There's some slight tweaks from what was in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. So the applicant stated that currently the micro distilleries are only permitted in the industrial, but there were several that were permitted.
So there's no we are sorry. Currently, our zoning district or zoning ordinance does not have a definition for micro distilleries. Distilleries are permitted in industrial.
Okay. That makes it clear. Okay. Only in industrial and that's distilleries, not micro distillery because we haven't defined micro distillers.
That's correct.
One thing that may help clarify, I mean, that is correct. What what is being proposed is that instead of creating separate definitions and uses for micro distilleries, micro solderies, micro wineries, that it's all one use micro that includes all four of those micros. And so everywhere in our zoning code where micro brewery is permitted, all the zoning districts, that would then be amended to include these other three micros. So the all those zoning districts would now include these other other types and and then changing the definition so that the definition includes those other micros. And we went through all the the limitations on on production levels and whatnot. And then include some tweaks to the supplementary standards that guide micro breweries. They would now regulate all all four of the micros with the inclusion of two additional supplementary standards that really help make sure it's micro by limiting the size. And then adding to zoning districts that are comparable to the other mixed use and downtown zoning districts we have. Not sure why they weren't. I'm not sure why micro breweries weren't originally permitted within those zoning districts. So that's that's part of this as well.
Any discussion?
Just to comment if I may, that city staff, particularly Alexandra, did a great job corraling all the research, putting it in a format that I could understand and making yourself coming up with a proposal that's logical, concise. Sounds like a winner to me.
I can say from the from the downtown advisory board and Economic Vitality Committee, there was pretty overwhelming support for it as as it has developed. Conversation started much before the the formal discussion. All right. Go ahead, John.
I don't see I one in the recommended motion anywhere.
So I guess to John's point is the distilleries are are already an approved use in I one. Would a micro distillery also be an approved use? Maybe it should be added.
I think it should be.
Yeah, to your point here.
And and then in the same question is what commercial type zoning district would just not be allowed in the event?
Yeah, good point is that does this include every commercial district? And we're only limiting them to not being in residential.
So I do think technically someone would be able to because distilleries are permitted in the I one. If someone wanted to open what qualified as a micro distillery, they would not be prohibited from doing so because it met the definition of a micro distillery and micro distillery wasn't listed when distillery was listed. However, for clarity, on the screen, we've added the three additional zoning districts where it is permitted by right without the need for supplementary standards. So the PCD, the I one and the PMD have been added to that to that list there, so.
And so the question is, are there any commercial districts where this would not be allowed?
C four. Neighborhood, neighborhood, commercial.
Intentional, leave that out.
So yes, it was it's not currently permitted. Microbreweries are currently not permitted in the C four, so we weren't looking to extend it. And because it's neighborhood, commercial, we thought it could potentially make it more controversial if you extended it to the C four. Certainly within your purview to include that in your motion. The inclusion of urban village and CHMU, those are more intense zoning districts. So that are comparable to GHMU, CMU, C one, HMU. So there's already zoning districts permitting micro breweries that were comparable to the two that have been proposed by staff to be included. C four could be, you know, argued one way or the other.
Well, do we have any more discussion, perhaps a motion at this point?
I'll go ahead and start the motion. I'd like to make a motion for recommending approval. I move planning board recommends city council approve and ordinance revising the definition use and supplementary standards of micro breweries to include micro distilleries, micro cideries and micro wineries in the C one, C two, C three, CMU, GHMU, HMU zoning districts and extending this amendment use to the CHMU and urban village zoning districts. This is what he handed. Are there are there additional districts that I'm supposed to?
Yeah, I want to see.
Oh, and I want, okay.
And CMU. Oh, CMU, you mentioned, okay.
Okay. He C D, I one, the end designing districts and extending this amended use to the CHMU and urban village zoning districts as a permitted use subject to the supplementary standards. Finding that the tax amendment is consistent with the goals, strategies and actions for the L U one, L U ten, C R four and T C one of the city's comprehensive plan and that the tax amendment is reasonable and in the public's interest to approve the application for the following reasons. One, it encourages infill development and redevelopment in areas planned for high density development. Goal L U one. It contrib to it contributes to downtown's role as the focal point of niche retailers within the city. Goal C R four. Three, it encourages mixed use development that reduces the need to drive. Gold T C one. And four, it will promote additional diversity of job opportunities within the city of Hendersonville. Five, it encourages reinvestment in the existing infrastructure and commercial real estate within the city of Hendersonville. Six, it reflects adaptation by the city to changing market trends in retail and the craft beverage industry.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second tapes? All right, we have a second discussion, any discussion? John, you're okay with the business advisory board not?
Yeah, I would just like to see that go to them either before city council or at least be consulted with other things. You know, on a consistent basis.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the next item on the agenda. Or do we have an answer on the table discussion yet? You want to take a quick break?
Or do we want to see how long this might take first?
You want to take a break?
Let's do that. We've had a request to take a three minute break. We'll reconvene at five thirty one. And twenty seven seconds. City attorney and has an answer for us on the parcel on Fleming.
So so C Z's um, are, so this parcel was originally zone M I C special use district. Which is quasi judicial process. That process no longer exists. One sixty D. Um, the update to the N C general statutes eliminated the special use as an option. So all of the special use districts within the city are now basically conditional zoning districts. They, on a lot of our zoning maps, may still be referenced as special use districts. But for all intents and purposes, they're conditional districts. And so when uh, anything is done on that in that district, it has to follow the general statutes, the zoning ordinance rules for those districts. Our zoning ordinance uh, basically says that any uh, substantial change to the boundaries of a site is considered a major modification. And a major modification has to go back through the process that established whatever the the original site plan was. Um, and uh, we have in conversation with the city attorney in a few previous instances had this conversation about subdivision and whether it triggers um, whether it's considered a major modification or minor modification. Interpretation has been that it's a major modification. And you'll recall the landings of Flat Rock perhaps, um, which was not so long ago. That was a subdivision that had to go back through the C Z D process. The applicant can, as they have, request a standard rezoning, which would allow the subdivision to occur and for the parcel to be rezoned in a standard way, but we can't pick one for part of it and another for the other, because basically as soon as the subdivision happens, so even if we rezone a defined area of this parcel with the idea that in the future it could be subdivided out, as soon as the subdivision happens, it triggers the site plan and the C Z D process. So for even for the remaining bit of the parcel, that change um, triggers that process. So uh, the the C Z um, requirement that boundary changes go back through the conditional zoning process is really what's what's happening here. And um, I've talked with Andrew uh, about this and um, I I don't want to speak for him. I think his preference would be to to hear the rezoning that's on the board's agenda tonight so that he can potentially move forward with that. If we were to step back and go through the C Z process, it would obviously take additional time. There's the neighborhood compatibility and planning board and so on and so forth. Um, the uh, the component of this for you all, um, one of the things that each each action by the board requires is the adoption of a comprehensive plan consistency statement. Um, this rezoning is consistent with the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. So it it could be considered consistent on that front. There are other components of the comprehensive plan that do speak specifically about uh, rezonings which um, impact or have the potential for negative impacts on existing neighborhoods. And so we've looked at that language and have that available, um, depending on what the board decides they want to do um, with this current application. I'll stop there and see, another that was quite a bit. So uh, see if there are questions about this. This is an intertwining of states. The last, let me say this last thing. One sixty D requires that any change, any modification to a site plan must go through the same process that was used to adopt it originally. So the state statute is actually what triggers us with a conditional zoning to go back through the conditional zoning process. We have to use that same process to make any change um, to the plan.
Any substantial change?
Any substantial change, yes. Minor minor modifications are permitted, but the ordinance.
Subdividing an acre off of a three acre tract is considered a major change.
So, yes, the 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 zoning ordinance terminology says a substantial change to the boundaries of the subject.
Now, there is no site plan now.
There is a site plan, but it's expired.
That's the two oh eight.
For clarification.
That's the uh, that is the site plan on the screen there, which was approved. It's an expired site plan, but it is uh, still associated with.
We would still have to abide by that site plan.
So, no, no one could build that site plan today because it is expired. If they were to if they were to want to build that site plan, they would have to actually come back before this board, like home two suites, if you remember that.
For clarification purposes, if you rezone the whole parcel, three point three eight acres gets goes back to whatever Andrew wants. I can deal with the separation later, right?
So, so if they were to rezone, if you were to approve the M I or if you were to recommend approval, went to council, council recommended approval, adopted M I C for the entire parcel. They would be able to subdivide and the remaining parcel that would remain with Hunting Creek would would be zoned M I C.
But they could go back and do something else with it later.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
But it would be difficult to go back to R four for parts of it?
Uh, so R six was was the high density. So that would be, to Matt's point earlier, that would be considered a down zoning because there'd be a reduction in the uses. The property owner would have to agree to that rezoning for that to be.
That's Hunting Creek's problem, not his.
Yeah, but that is, that is true. Andrew is not interested in the rest of.
But it's the neighborhood's problem too.
Yeah, so, yeah, but that's.
Not zoned residential anymore, which it was before the special use.
Right.
Lou, real quick, so, so everything goes through, um, and somebody wants to subdivide the other parcels. Would that come back to us?
Uh, no, no, I mean, it would depend on what kind of subdivision it was. What would be the remaining acreage to something?
Two point.
I don't know that that would ever trigger anything that would come back to planning board. Yeah, I don't think it would be large enough to show up here again. It would be a Yeah, it would be a minor subdivision and it would probably be an administrative process. It would stay on the staff level.
Lou, would it not be possible if the if the owner came back with the application, could we, the owner could ask for it to be returned to R six, C Z D and and the hospital use, you all agree with those at the same time, then they could divide it.
So, so the a- an application for rezoning could be submitted by the property owner.
Hunting Creek.
Hunting Creek, yeah. Their which their signature is on the current application, so they are in agreement with what's currently been requested. Uh, requests for rezoning, is there a as rezoning is denied by city council? Uh, is there a timeline?
Twelve months for the for the if, for the for the same zoning district.
Okay.
So if this were to be denied by city council, uh, the request for M I C, they'd have to wait twelve months to come back and request M I C again. However, they could request M I C C Z D.
With a site plan.
So different zoning districts.
Earlier than twelve months.
Yes, for the same, the only, the twelve months only applies if they're asking for the same zoning district. So.
I I still just have a little bit of a problem with it going from R six to M I C on that backside. And I feel like that neighborhood needs to be protected somehow.
Fine, Jim, but it's not really correct to say issue going from R six. It's not R six. It's, I mean, this piece of land is not.
It's not R six currently, but but it's it's special use and the neighborhood knew what the plan was. It was parking and medical buildings that operate.
Happy about it then either.
They operate Monday through Friday, no nights, no weekends. You know, it's it's not an obtrusive. You know, it's not, it's not a use where it's going to be a nuisance.
Okay. He may decide to go ahead and build that residential.
The way I feel, I don't.
Hunting Creek though. It doesn't affect him.
No, but.
He does clean up the neighborhood, so.
Right. I understand what you're, what what Mr. Riddle is trying to do. I just, I just hate that it can't be just reverted back because it didn't get built.
No, I like the public having a voice. For that neighborhood since you've already had six people divorce.
Well, do we have a a motion? I mean, it's only a recommendation to city council. Mr. Riddle, the applicant can still go to city council with or without our recommendation, but.
You can try.
You're looking to to make a motion to approve the rezoning?
Okay. Uh, recommending approval. I move planning board recommend that city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation designation of the subject property pin number nine five six nine dash six zero dash twenty eight eleven from the M I C dash S U, medical institutional, cultural, special use to M I C, medical institutional, cultural, finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plans, future land use map designation of urban institutional and neighborhood activity center, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, zoning map amendment.
Uh, Peter, I think there's an updated version. Are you reading from the staff report? Could be a printed copy that was handed out prior to the meeting. Um, where, how far?
Probably just start the second.
Finding.
My finding that the rezoning is consistent with section eight point three and goals L U dash eight and L U dash twelve of the two twenty thirty comprehensive plan, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the rezoning will allow opportunities for infill development. Number, section eight point three. Number two, the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Number three, the rezoning allows the subject property to be removed from a special use district that was never constructed. It's the end of it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Would you like to second that motion? Can't do it, I'm sorry. Hunter, we do have a second on the motion. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. No discussion. Let's go ahead and take a vote. I have a feeling that this is going to be split, so let's use our hands. Um, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
That's three. All against the motion.
Nay.
One, two, three, four, five, six. So three to six, the motion fails. Does anybody else want to make?
I would make one for denial, but I can't find my paperwork.
Um, denial. It's right up here for you. But we need to refer, we need to refer to the impacts on the residential neighborhood. Go ahead.
And that is listed under number one there.
Okay, very good.
I regret to make this motion, but I will make it. I move planning board recommend that city council deny the rezoning application for the subject property pin ninety five sixty nine dash sixty dash twenty eight eleven, changing the zoning designation from M I C special use medical institutional cultural special use to M I C medical institutional cultural for the following reasons. Uh, due to guidance from the comprehensive plan strategy L U three point five, minimize negative impacts from growth and land use changes on existing land uses. Some zoning map changes and other development applications may create short term incompatibilities with existing neighborhoods, even if they are consistent with the future land use plan. It is critical that city officials consider the full range of impacts of all development applications in addition to conformance with the future land use plan. Uh, two, the rezoning is not compatible with surrounding uses uh, in the back in particular in the rear of the property. Um, three. Oh, I'm gonna stop right there. One and two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Barbara, have a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll have, take a vote, and I have a feeling we'll have a split decision here too. So let's go ahead and raise our hands, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, one, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? Nay. Three, motion passes six to three. Or denial? All right, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is a zoning lighting ordinance. Neil and his committee have been working on for over a year. And it's finally coming to the planning, right?
Make a good loop.
Uh, it's finally coming to the planning board and I'm going to encourage you to keep it here for a little while longer. Um, so this is uh, the the uh, update on the lighting ordinance. Um, the uh, committee did begin meeting uh, well into uh, the early part of twenty twenty one, so spring of twenty twenty one. Um, we had a couple of meetings uh, with the lighting committee at that time. The um, business advisory committee also reviewed what we had as a draft ordinance at that time in June and July. There's a great deal of feedback on the ordinance that was sort of the full slate M L O, which was the model lighting ordinance um, that was presented at that time. The model lighting ordinance is a effort of the International Dark Sky Association and the Illuminating Engineers Society. Uh, and those two groups got together. Uh, the Illuminating Engineers Society establishes standards for lighting. Um, outdoors, indoors, as I understand it, all sorts of places. And I, I should stop actually. Um, we have two, uh, guests with us this evening, but we have multiple guests. Susan Frady, who some few of course may recognize. And then, uh, Mr. Gary Steinberg is sitting next to, uh, Susan. Gary is, uh, has been helping us on the lighting committee and is, um, with, uh, G E. Uh, he's got a lot of familiarity with fixtures and, and all that great stuff. And then Debbie Bell, who's also here with us. Uh, Debbie's got experience on the actual application of, uh, variety of ordinances to commercial sites and what that kind of impact has and has been helping uh, commercial property owners install lighting, uh, that's compliant with a variety of ordinances for. I don't want to say. Yeah, quite, quite a lot. So forty two years. So, um, Debbie and Gary, uh, both kind of started interacting with the lighting committee, uh, over the summer. Uh, staff, um, there's no easy way to say it, got real busy. Um, and I, I apologies to Neil, but we did not have a lot of bandwidth for, for working on the ordinance for a period of time. Were able to get back into it as we got into the fall, reconvened the lighting committee, uh, to review a um, amended version of the lighting ordinance draft. Um, and so that occurred during the month of December, uh, and into January, we had a meeting actually last week, uh, with the lighting committee. There were a couple of additional changes and I met with the business advisory committee today at lunch um, to talk about the ordinance. So going to go over kind of the broad components of the ordinance. Uh, talk a little bit about some of the changes that were recommended by, um, the, uh, lighting committee last week. Discuss a little bit the, uh, feedback from the business advisory committee. Um, and we've got a demonstration with existing lighting and we're going to, um, we've, we've got a little box. We show you some light colors and things like that. Fun, fun stuff. Um, and it, it also do encourage you guys to ask questions about any and all components of this because we have two great resources. Um, as it relates to answering those questions. So, um, project background. Uh, the, this is a city initiated zoning text amendment. Um, we have gotten a number of questions about, you know, the why. Obviously, the planning board has been having conversations about lighting and lighting ordinance and its applicability to commercial properties, uh, for a while. That conversation was also happening at city council. Um, it really kind of initiated actually with the construction of the, uh, police station. Uh, when the police station was, uh, under, uh, design review. Um, there were citizens who came to the, uh, city council and, and asked about being dark sky compliant in the construction, design, development of that building. And so that sort of started a conversation at the council level. And basically in, in hearing from both city council and from the planning board that this was an area of interest, uh, staff began working on the project. Applicable zoning districts are listed there and also have additional applicability, which is proposed to be associated with stream buffer and elevation and a residential transition zone. We'll have some more maps on all of those components, but those basically constitute our zones where we would be applying, uh, the ordinance. Um, so the ordinance purpose is important to consider. Uh, this is really the, um, you know, the policy component of it. Why, why are we doing it? Um, and the, uh, first, uh, element is to minimize adverse offsite impacts of lighting such as light trespass and obtrusive light. In the ordinance, there's a section related to, there, there's the meat and potatoes part of the ordinance, as I call it, is the offsite uh, limits, lighting limits, and then the lumens limits. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But basically the offsite uh, component of the ordinance is if you think of a three D commercial site, which is a rectangle, you want to light the ground in that site, but you don't want light to go outside of a certain box. Uh, so there's no, if you're lighting my parking, I'm lighting my parking lot, but I'm not lighting my neighbor's parking lot or a residential neighbor to, that's an adjacent property. And I'm also not sending light just up into the sky. Um, so that's the minimizing adverse offsite impacts and then curtailing light pollution, reducing sky glow and improving the nighttime environment is a second element. Um, these, uh, second element, uh, is a little bit more tied to the lumen limits, although also has components of the, the offsite impact. But the lumen limit is basically the total volume of initial lumens and lumen is every light it has a initial lumen rating. Uh, it's a number. It's the M, as Debbie was saying earlier today, it's the miles per gallon. Um, if you're trying to rate what a light produces when you first turn it on. So those two elements, ordinance purposes, which are policy decisions, right? Choosing how you want to do that are what then the ordinance is, uh, working to put in place. And then the last two help protect the natural environment from the adverse effects of artificial lighting at night. You see that in our natural resource zone and then conserving energy and resources to the greatest extent possible. There are some standards just associated with turning lights on and off at dusk and dawn. Can you click on that link for me? So this map, first map, which earlier today, this was a bit of a booger to get it to come up, but, um, this is the proposed lighting zone. So these are, this is, uh, our commercial districts within the city of Hendersonville. Um, so you, you're pretty much seeing where all of our commercial zoning resides. You can see some patterns there. Uh, the sixty four corridor, uh, twenty five north corridor, Greenville highway, Spartanburg highway to the south uh, and the downtown core downtown area and sixty four, uh, west too, as it relates to some of the M I C and party hospitals, some institutional uses out there. So this is where the ordinance would apply. Um, go back to that presentation, the, and click on that next slide that's got two uh, links. Yeah, that one. Go ahead and click those. Um, one of these is the natural resource zone and the second is, um, residential transition zone. So this is the proposed natural resource zone. It reflects the fifty foot stream buffer. This is a standard that exists in our ordinance already. Um, we have some stream protection standards, natural resource protection standards associated with the stream buffer. Um, things that can and can't happen within that, um, fifty feet from top of bank of, uh, streams that run through the city. So this is our uh, stream map. The other component, the larger blobs, uh, for lack of a better term, reflect, uh, twenty three hundred feet and above. Um, there was a discussion of also, uh, reducing lighting in those areas above. I will note that both of those areas fall outside of our commercial zoning, um, in large part. Then the next one is a single color for the commercial. And you can see a, uh, yellow buffer that basically just represents where residential abuts commercial and where this residential transition zone, um, would come into play. Um, so these are areas where commercial zoning is, is running into residential or abutting residential neighborhoods. Um, and where some additional standards associated with the RTZ would be, uh, applicable. I didn't overlooked mentioning the, uh, commercial zones include our multifamily areas. So it would include, uh, apartment complexes. I'll go back to the. Okay, so I'm just going to quickly go through these. You all saw these last month. Um, but then I know we didn't have the opportunity for any kind of discussion, but the original M L O proposal included a total of four lighting zones. And in the original M L O, we had kind of assigned certain zoning districts with certain lighting zones. The current basically puts all of our commercial and multifamily into one zone. So there's one standard established for all of those. It is the highest standard or, uh, the most lenient standard, the highest number. Um, the L Z three. So we use the standards that were associated with L Z's three for the commercial multifamily zone. And then used some of the lower standards, L Z zero for the natural resource zone and a bit of a mix for the residential transition zone. With the residential transition zone, we focused on the offsite lighting impact. So light trespass and that was through the bug ratings. So didn't focus as much on the lumen limits on those sites as we did on the, um, design or, um, at least as it relates to how the M L O regulates these. Uh, there's a section in the original M L O exemptions and exceptions, um, basically the same. We, we simplified some of the exemptions around temporary and seasonal lighting and low voltage light landscape lighting. Uh, and I think I talked about this last month, but a lot of what um, in, in looking at the ordinance from my perspective, um, as a apartment director and overseeing staff and how are we going to enforce this and how are we going to put these things in place? Some of these simplifications are reflective of our ability to uh, you know, enforce what ordinance we adopt. So there were things in there that were pretty specific about seasonal lighting and I was thinking, we're not going to be getting into checking Christmas bolts. So, um, that's the kind of thing that we are talking about as it relates to those elements. Uh, lighting controls that there, uh, were two components, the original M L O proposal, an automatic switching requirement and an automatic light reduction requirement. The automatic switching requirement is what I mentioned earlier. That's the, um, dawn to dusk, turn it off and on. Uh, the automatic light reduction requirements, a little bit more involved. It's a curfew for whereby at a certain point lighting, uh, on, onsite lighting is reduced by a percentage, thirty percent, forty percent, whatever it is established. The current proposal eliminates the automatic lighting reduction requirements, does keep the switching requirements in place. Most of our commercial sites have some sort of, uh, switching requirement in place currently. Um, another element that, um, would be difficult for our existing department to enforce, uh, to say the least. So I mentioned meat and potatoes earlier. Um, this, uh, is one of those. Um, the original M L O established limits for total lumens onsite. And it uses an, a number of, um, uh, methods to establish what those are, and I'll talk a little bit about that, but, um, the lumen limit is the M P Gs. It's, you have one thousand square feet of hardscape, you get one thousand lumens per square foot of hardscape. That's wrong. I don't remember exactly what it is, but that's what the, the, the tie in is. It's basically a, um, you, you're getting a allotment of lumens for your site based on how much area you're lighting. Um, and those are established based on which zone you're in. Uh, as you can see, we use the L Z zero for the natural resource zone and the L Z three standards for the residential transition zone and the commercial multifamily zone. I'll talk a little bit more about, I, I have this mention up here of using the parking sma- space or square foot method. There, there is in the ordinance, as was suggested to be revised by the lighting committee on last week, we reintroduced the performance method, which is another method for establishing what this limit is. Um, and I will note, this is one element. Um, I'll go ahead and talk about this now because it's most applicable to this specific element. This is one element that the business advisory committee had a number of questions about and members of our lighting committee have had the chance to review a, um, propose, like a service station lighting. So one of the challenges, let me take a step back. One of the challenges for staff and assessing, um, the impact of the lighting ordinance on our existing community is that we don't have any kind of lighting ordinance. And so we don't currently request lighting plans. Um, so we don't have a, you know, we're at, we're at, we're here and we're trying to get there. We're kind of trying to pick the place to be. Uh, and so to, uh, address that, um, the business advisory committee has asked that we look at some existing lighting plans and we have, um, help in doing so from, from Debbie and Gary. Debbie's got some access potentially to, um, some of the more recently done commercial sites within the city that would have lighting plans. Now, we don't have those plans, but they were done. Um, and we could then use uh, our current ordinance, its current language to assess those. The, uh, Debbie had managed to work through one of those for a gas station and is concerned that the lumen limits that we have today are, are going to be pretty restrictive, basically. Um, you want to maybe discuss or highlight just what kind of impacts you saw from that?
Yes. I've never been told somebody couldn't hear me before. When I actually evaluated an existing site, uh, and referenced it back to the M L O prescriptive method, and I looked at it, performance allows a little more leeway with the designer. Um, if we think about miles, I always use miles per gallon. If you think about manufacturer says you get thirty five miles per gallon. Well, that thirty five miles per gallon might work well at twenty, twenty miles an hour. But when I get on I ninety five and I'm running eighty five miles an hour, all of a sudden that miles per gallon goes down, right? Lighting similar to that. On, on any given site, other than maybe a football field, you're looking for, you may have different applications. For example, in a convenience store, you have, um, e, egress and to the, the area and then back out into the main highway. Um, you have pedestrian conflict with people walking from parking spaces to the sidewalk. You have a requirement for what the sidewalk needs to be. You have a requirement for what light levels need to be vertically on the gas pumps. You have even light levels, um, suggested for, uh, closed circuit television. And we did a survey through P E P. And the respondents said that seventy five percent of those that responded used C C T. So vertical illuminance is important. This only takes in consideration the light that falls directly onto the parking lot surface, right? Not, not the reflected light up, certainly not the vertical light level. So when I actually ran the calculations and, and used both the prescription, prescriptive, which was very restrictive, and then moved to the performance, it basically lowered the light levels by seventy five percent. Now, when I take that relative to what the I S standards, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, and I was a career, um, member of that one, and I think Gary, you still are. I remember, right? Um, they actually write the standards for all of, uh, North America. And they are holding up in court as a precedent. Should someone trip or fall on your property or be, have some sort of an accident on your property, they, they can not claim that lighting was the reason for it and it actually holds up in court as a precedent for. But if you drop under that threshold, you open yourself up to some liabilities. I'm not sure that the, certainly the property owners are interested in either. So that was my biggest concern is that, again, the miles per gallon or lumens per square foot, um, didn't take into consideration that it was a mixed use and also the pedestrian conflict. For example, the lighting on I ninety five has minimal pedestrian conflict should. Whereas on Main Street with the crosswalks, the pedestrian conflict's very high. So the light levels have to be taken into consideration and, and this type of method doesn't allow for that. The second thing, and I wanted to share with you, um, part of the reasoning that I understand that we wanted to move this way was to make Hendersonville a greener city. And I understand that, spending forty two years in lighting. I was one of those people that always said, only put light where you need it. We don't need it up in the air. That's not where we need it, right? But we do need to be able to safely maneuver about as we move through. And, um, so one of the things I wanted to make sure that we were aware of is that L E D products, lighting emitting diodes, I'm not sure these are in. Are these L E Ds? I can't tell. They have a diffused lens. But anyway, you're familiar with the purple lights around town. They're not supposed to be purple, by the way. But those are L E D products and you'll see a lot of those. Duke energy's moved to, to L E Ds almost completely now, I think. Um, probably for the last five or six years at least. They're doing L E Ds only, but they're inherently already energy efficient. Probably, I'm going to say fifty percent more energy efficient. And by in doing so, the second thing they provide you with is better uniformity. So that gives you visually a better chance to see this great uniformity in here. You seen where you. You seen where you walk down a street and there's dark shadows, then you walk into a lighted area and there's dark. Your eye doesn't always adapt quickly enough. So when you walk out of that bright area into that dark area, someone could be lurking there. You'd never see them because your eyes aren't adapted. And as you get older like me and your lens is yellow and then you have to wear lenses too, um, your eyes respond a little little slower. But LEDs give you a better uniformity already. So that has allowed the IES folks to lower some of these light levels from the old HID, high intensity discharge lighting. So there are some movements forward already making those changes. I'm just very concerned that if you restrict folks by miles per gallon or lumens per watt, you might open the can of worms that you might wanna not wanna go down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Um, so you can see, we've got a lot of knowledge on that committee and it's been very, very helpful. Um, and I think that uh, so yeah, so let's continue. And uh, the next item uh is the off-site impact limit. So this is related to and and fixtures will have uh an initial lumens rating. And then they will typically also have bug ratings. Um, and the bug rating is backlighting, uplighting and glare. And it's a it's a rating that every lamp gets that um can be used to assess how it will light the site. Um, so the the next component of the standards is using the bug ratings. And again, it establishes uh standards per zone. Um, and the NRZ uses light zone zero through standards and the uh commercial multifamily uses light zone three. Mentioned earlier, the RTZ, uh the residential transition zone. This is where there is a blend of standards. So for a commercial site that's a budding residential, uh we did look at uh using more of a blend as it related to bug ratings with the idea being that uh you'd be preventing uh lighting. You're you're doing more to prevent lighting from crossing the property boundary, right? So if I have a uh unit and I'm next to a commercial site and there's commercial lighting to light their parking lot, uh, the parking lot lighting that's along my property boundary is uh that much m- more focused on the parking lot and not bleeding back on to to my parcel. Um, so this was a a recommendation by um the lighting committee last week to reintroduce the performance method. Um, it's it's more complex. I'll be perfectly honest. I don't know how it works. It would require a lighting engineer. Because one of the reasons we moved removed it is because I was like, I'm not going to be able to explain that in front of the planning board. But um, from the perspective that it is another method that a lighting engineer can use to meet the standards in the ordinance that gives them more flexibility on site design. So for more complex sites or larger sites, um, or, you know, a lot of um uh chain type users are going to have their own standards. The performance method would be a way that they can apply their standards and meet any ordinance requirement that we might have. Uh, the other standard is is the prescriptive method. And that is much more, as it as it says, prescriptive. It's uh, you get X number of uh lumens or the bug rating is X per square foot or per parking space, that sort of thing. So special permit lighting is another component of the ordinance. Uh, the original MLO, um, you know, basically similar. Um, these sections will be at the end of the day similar. You can see, I've still got a note in here. We we had made minor modifications to eliminate the performance method. Those would be added back in. Most likely used to fit in this category in this community is gonna be athletic fields. So, you know, where higher levels of lighting are required for the facilities. And then uh, we we spent a good amount of time on existing lighting because there's quite a bit of um. You know, thi- this is actually on a day-to-day basis what staff would typically be running into. Uh, there will be site review, site plan review for new commercial development uh and new new multifamily residential. But a lot of what we get is, you know, zoning permits for small modifications to existing sites and what standards and what triggers require compliance on those addition on those sites. So existing lighting, basically, once you adopt a new ordinance that establishes standards, becomes non-conforming lighting and your standards, your triggers for non-conforming sites having to come into compliance um are uh, your zoning ordinance has those already, right? So a zoning ordinance is gonna have requirements for um non-conforming site vegetation or site plantings. If you do a certain amount of work on your site, you're gonna have to bring that into compliance. And what we did here was just to go through the zoning ordinance and look at where our triggers were in uh current, in the current zoning ordinance and mirror those for the lighting. So basically, uh, if I'm commercial property owner and I'm doing work on my property, I'm not gonna run into a situation where I have to change out the lights, but I don't have to do the plantings. I'm either going to not trigger compliance on the rehab that I'm doing or I'm going to trip in and it's gonna require that I bring the site up to compliance. And those are, those are um, as Neil will tell you, because I I told him he wouldn't like this part of it when I was going through it. They're they're higher in our zoning ordinance, the the triggers than uh the MLO suggests.
Twenty-five percent.
An example would be if uh you had a site that was being exa- expanded. Now, I will note, any new lighting would be required to be conforming. But if a site, an existing site was expanded by by less than fifty percent, only the new lighting would be required to be conforming. But if it was expanded by greater than fifty percent of the existing site square footage, then the entire site would have to come into compliance. So basically, it's if you're doing a major expansion or rehab of a site, then the site comes into compliance. If you're doing less than that, uh then you don't have to to meet those standards. And those are reflective of um existing standards in our vegetation, uh natural resource uh sections of the zoning ordinance. Um, and then there's some standards around maintenance and how much you can change out at any given time, all that good stuff. Um, but minor repairs, maintenance, et cetera, are permitted. So anybody changing out light bulbs is not gonna suddenly have to come into full compliance um with the uh with the ordinance. Does that make sense? Okay. There's a section on tables and definitions. Basically, the tables are being updated to reflect the different lighting sets. So we now have the three versus the four. So thi- this is kind of a recap of what I've talked about so far. Um, one one addition that the committee on Tuesday of last week did recommend we include would be general standards for correlated color temperature, CCT and color rendering index, CRI. So color rendering index is um a measure of how well a light renders true color. So if I have a blue shirt on and I walk in under a light, can you tell that my shirt's blue or does it look some other color?
Does the LED make a difference?
Uh, I think it does. I'm probably, yes, okay. Um, I I think color rendering index for uh LEDs is much better than a lot of older legacy lighting. And then the correlated color temperature, I'm less comfortable talking about this one. But um, the the basically, it's the, well, this is the one we've got our little thing for, right? CCT is the little buttons. Um, we can actually show you what the color temperature are. And the color temperature basically goes from like red, oh, that's the bright one. Don't stare directly at it. Is that a, what is that? Yeah, I can see that. What is that? What's, what 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 temperatures are we looking at?
So sixty-five hundred, don't stare at.
Yeah.
Seven hundred, don't look at it. Five thousand. Forty-five.
We'll all have stars after this.
Thirty-five. Three thousand.
So CCT, yeah, is a big component of um uh dark sky. And dark sky basically doesn't wanna, there, I think their recommendation is uh three thousand Kelvin or less. So what he was just talking about, the three thousand, so the more yellow red light. What, in talking with our uh lighting committee, uh it sounds like four thousand K is the standard um acceptable for commercial. So a commercial use is gonna oftentimes require a a slightly higher temperature. But that the LED technology, as it currently exists, is sufficient in the four thousand K version to to meet the needs of the IES standards. So what are we doing with this current ordinance? Um, it is very much focused on the commercial areas. And it does take into account the city's natural resources as it relates to the stream buffer specifically. Um, and it then further looks uh at something that we've heard come up in this board a number of times, which is that transition between commercial and residential. And then it uses two primary measures, total site lumens and site lighting off-site impacts on adjacent parcels. Um, I think uh, you know, my my sense after the business advisory committee meeting this morning is that there is uh some real concern around the site lumen limits. Uh, and there may be some, there were some questions around um bug ratings for properties that are, you know, adjacent commercial to commercial. Like, is that as needed um for uh protecting light trespass when a commercial property is adjacent to another commercial property? I think the lumen limit is the one that we felt, or I feel, uh, we need a little bit better answer to. Um, and that's related to what exactly would be the reduction in the lighting on and any given site within the city if we applied these lumen limits. And um Debbie has, like I mentioned earlier, agreed to kind of help look at some of uh existing commercials, site plans, lighting plans, apply our standard and get a sense of where that is. Um, and the reason for doing that is at the end of the day, that's a policy decision, right? Deciding where exactly we wanna land on reducing those standards or reducing those impacts. Um, and uh, if it is as dramatic as a seventy-five percent decrease in the lumens onsite, then that's gonna be a very, very significant impact to commercial properties in the city. So uh, I certainly am not uh the one who gets to make those kinds of decisions. Um, and at this point, uh, what I would um suggest, and obviously the board can uh take action as they'd like, but that um we give the lighting committee a little bit of time to work on the review of the site plan and use the existing ordinance to uh apply and to uh get a better sense of what those impacts would be to a a couple of commercial projects that have come through the city lately. In the meantime, I will tell you that in talking with John Connet today, uh, I am going to do an update to city council in February with the intent of getting a little bit more um policy direction. So um, you know, talking through the lumen limits and the off-site impacts, it won't be adopting an ordinance, it wouldn't be making any sort of decision along those lines, but getting a little bit more feedback on um where where they would like to see us land um at the end of the day. Uh, and I think that having the chance to review some of the um existing lighting plans and applying what we've done so far, and maybe even looking, Debbie has shared a couple of other lighting ordinances to um looking at what uh those various things do in terms of impacts uh to try and get to something that uh, as as John Connet told me today. He said, if you manage to get through city council and everybody's angry, we've done our job. Um, and his point just being that this type of ordinance is probably going to require compromise on a on a variety of of perspectives. Um, because it will at the end of the day likely have some kind of impact on the commercial properties. Otherwise, um, you know, it wouldn't be a new new regulation, um, but it's unlikely um, you know, that that it would do exactly what we might want it to do. So um, I'll stop with that and see if there's any questions for.
One question.
Yes.
Anybody done any relative cost analysis for this whole concept?
So.
What it could possibly.
So the the that we have had some of those conversations early on. Um, and I would defer to Gary a little bit. I know that in terms of the individual fixture pricing, you wanna talk to that?
It's Gary Steimer down with the GE current business. I've been there about twenty-two years and Debbie Debbie wins in terms of the length of uh tenure. But she's worked with both lighting, when we did lighting systems and public lighting. And TM, I guess, that is a division of.
You're on the draft ordinance committee, correct, Gary?
I've been, I was requested to participate as a local expert. Um, I'm I'm involved in the IES on the testing procedures committees and on a variety of committees for glare, evaluation and assessment methods. Uh, anyhow, so relative to the economic question, right? If you're doing a a new, uh, basically nobody manufactures the lighting that existed five years from now or five years ago. Uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe, all major lighting manufacturers started transitioning to LED lighting as solutions. So you can't even buy that lighting anymore. You can almost not even repair it because of the availability of components and the progressive uh restrictions on uh mercury-bearing lamps. You can't even buy lamps um in some instances. So on a new development, a new, a major commercial development, like a big box retail site or or a large car dealership or something, um, they're gonna have to buy LED lighting to start with. And if they do designed infrastructure with their own poles and things, those costs are the same, whether they're LED or old HID technology. Uh, so they don't, it doesn't reckon represent on a new development, an economic impact, right? So so where you see it is on small-scale sites that wouldn't historically do lighting design. Um, they have to make choices between what kinds of fixtures they buy. They're all gonna be LED and they're either gonna be good LED or cheap LED. And so you can have sites where there's no lighting design and people will give a site plan to an electrical contractor and electrical contractor will run down to electrical distributor and say, what do you got on your shelf that'll do this job for me? And those are the sites that you get unplanned results, right? And that's why ordinance exists, so that you don't get objectionable unplanned results for the community. So there's some potential cost impact for those guys because they might have to make a better uh product choice than they might historically make. Um, the the other where areas where you get lighting solutions supplied is when a small-scale site like a, you know, convenience store or a small-scale auto lot or some other small-scale retail site that wants to put lighting up and goes to Duke and says, I need lighting on my site. And Duke says, well, I got a pole here and a pole here that's doing electrical distribution and I can hang floodlights on it or or some other kind of lighting, maybe Cobra heads or or some kind of roadway lighting that I can use for your parking lot site. And and so Duke Energy now, they don't have the old lighting either because nobody supplies it. So they're supplying LED lights for those solutions. So again, the choice is, do I install a light that's as shielded as I can to prevent trespass on other sites and waste up into the night sky? Or do I put something up that's unshielded? Same fixture with or without a shield. And so there's a little bit of incremental cost to do the right thing in shielding it uh from waste up into the night sky or trespass onto an adjacent property. But it's not a huge, not a huge cost, so anyhow.
Picture, thank you.
Yeah, um, I guess the other thing I I would say is most ordinances, this ordinance and the and and the model, the IDA IES lighting ordinance that it's based off of, right? The intent wasn't to create unusual restrictions. Then the intent was really to encourage good practice, good lighting practice, right? There's there's good lighting practice and there's bad lighting practice. And you can drive around town and see examples of both, right? As a community, you probably wanna move towards better practice over time in an effort to protect the environment and to reduce the uh objection objectionable aspects that that get created in some lighting institutions. So I personally believe that ordinances have value for a lot of reasons, they exist for good reasons. It just shouldn't be onerous, right? Not to the extent that we can make them. So the task is to make one that's workable and in. So the task is to make one that's workable and in the long range improves the lighting condition for the community and protects the environment where we can. So thanks for.
Opportunity to participate.
Ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Gary and Debbie, thanks so much. You're experts, you know, and you're spending a lot of time on this, and that's, we really appreciate it. This is so far over my head, these terms, these abbreviations, these bugs. And you guys use twenty different CPIs and X, Y, Zs, you know? Other than Neil, I think it's over most of our heads here.
Well, over my head, trust me.
Okay. I, a picture, you know, speaks a thousand words. And I would love to see some pictures up here of sites that maybe don't comply and sites that do comply. And I don't know if it's coming back here in a month, but I'd love to see that myself.
Yeah.
We know it when we see it.
I I felt like earlier, after attending the business advisory committee this meeting, I felt like, personally felt like everybody would really benefit by some some context and some educational content about the basics, so that you could essentially visualize some of these things. So like that CCT demonstrator is a good way to understand what sixty-five hundred Kelvin means and what and what twenty-seven hundred Kelvin means. And it's the difference between color properties of daylight and color properties of candlelight. That's that's the range we're talking about. That kind of information exists, we can put it together in a PowerPoint for you guys, I think. It's a, it's a good thing to do.
If there's any examples of nearby cities that are already doing these things, there must be photos of them at night.
Yeah, well, there's good lighting in Hendersonville. And there's plenty of bad lighting in Hendersonville too, right? Every community has a has a mix of it. Wherever you go and see a floodlight on a pole, it's probably not really good lighting. But it but it's quite common in the community, right? Because they they it's it's the least expensive utility solution to providing general site lighting.
I showed my wife this document from last month, and she said, look, all I know is I'm going to the brightest lit up store at night that there is, okay? And I don't know, that's something women feel. I think that's a reasonable state. They want good lighting at night. And I'm concerned that these limits that are existing, I can't interpret them, but they're going to be too dim. But that remains to be seen.
Yeah, so one thing that is hard, and this is a situation where it's really hard to communicate brightness through comparative images, because dynamic range of the brightness, it's completely lost in in the photo, in the photographic process. And so it's it's a little hard to do that in PowerPoint. You can try to do it some, but sometimes sometimes those things are really, you have to you have to be standing there looking at the site.
Well, that's.
But the point you made about, the point you made about the security concern is is very important in terms of, at least in terms of the psychological impact that it has and the choices that people make as a result of it. And it's not lost on the lighting community that that has some importance in how people perceive the adequacy of lighting. Sometimes sites are substantially overlit versus, you know, Debbie mentioned IES is the standards organization, and sites can be substantially overlit versus the IES recommendation. And the IES doesn't normally recommend normally recommends averages, you know, a minimum recommended average and a uniformity criteria. So if you have a light source or or a lighting solution that has poor capability with respect to creating a uniform result, then you overlight the site to bring the minimums up and, you know, because you're stuck with a certain uniformity limitation. So anyhow, I I would love to work on some kind of educational background information that you guys can have and try.
Even if we had an assignment, you know, drive around town and go buy this business.
Yeah, 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 sure.
And we could do that individually.
Give me four, give me four addresses.
Give us four addresses, go buy.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And we could do that, you know, after dark on our own.
Yeah, and you can make some judgments.
I mean, well, like with with any ordinance, it's 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 really hard to think of everything. I mean, I I never thought that, well, if we reduce the light on a on a commercial property, maybe the security cameras won't pick up enough images to work properly. Who thought of that, you know? And so, or we we might light it up and then it'd be a liability issue for the for the business owner. So you've got to think of all those things, but it's.
You really have to know the numbers on that, on a CCT camera issue. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we did the first investigations with Walmart. Also, major retailer, big box sites, small scale variants, like neighborhood markets. What's interesting that, you can't ignore the CCT thing, but it but as an example, our first pilot site in in two thousand nine for that that company, that was one of our evaluation criteria. And and that particular site changed its average levels by almost a factor of five because of what LED technology was limited to at that point in time. It was kind of at its bare minimum in terms of economic payback and sufficiency to meet the site lighting needs. But a factor of five reduction didn't make their security people any more concerned about it, because the CCT cameras that they had happened to use had huge dynamic range. And so they were able to render color and see color in their in their closed circuit security cameras, even at substantially lower averages for the site. So it's it's not necessarily true that that's true for everybody and everybody's cameras, but it's not necessarily true that it's that it's not true, right?
Black and white, obviously.
Yeah, so anyhow. I should shut up and.
I think the educational information would be very helpful for everyone.
And so I want to echo what Mr. Black said, that we are very, very grateful for their time and assistance on this. I don't think we'd be moving this forward with without their knowledge, so. I don't have anything else on this.
You have a question?
Do we have to do a motion to table or?
Well, there's no motion.
I don't know that you need to do a motion to table, because we've just had a discussion. I think of everybody, if there's consensus to do what we've talked about, then we'll continue. Continue to move forward.
Have you, there there must be other cities that have gone through this. Rather than reinvent the wheel, there's got to be communities that are similar to us in North Carolina somewhere who have gone through all this, who instituted it and have a result. And do we have any information on that?
So we have looked at comparable cities ordinances. I'll I'll tell you, there's a real mix out there. And it it it's very much driven by what they're they're looking to do. And I will also say that early on in this process for staff, it was all Greek, whether it was a lighting ordinance, you know, just how it was working. I think we're probably in a better situation with that now. I know Debbie's shared a few ordinances for us to review here just recently. I think that conversation will continue to 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 develop. I I will note, though, that we did start with the MLO, which was a model lighting ordinance and and did provide an initial framework. So even if we do end up, you know, trimming away at that, there was an effort to use a kind of a baseline to get started with. It sounds like removing the performance method is what triggered the fact that maybe there wouldn't be enough lighting for certain. Uh, well, and I think just looking at the I I think some of the looking specifically at the lumen limits and and just what that impact means for a a small site, a service station site.
Just one, you talk about small sites, but I'm a little concerned, we're worried about Walmarts and so forth here. And I and I want to keep in focus, a lot of people have quarter acre sites too. And I do, okay? I'll speak for myself. I I, if I wanted to replace a light, I wouldn't have a frigging clue what's allowed, okay? Now, it sounds like I can replace a light today, but I've already been turned down by Duke to relight my parking lot, claiming the city has a new lighting ordinance, and they're not sure what it said. So I'm just worried about that. It's, you know, it scares me. But I don't know if there needs to be an exemption for for business lots of a certain size even, you know, quarter acre, half an acre. I'd like to think about that question.
Let's, I'll be glad to host a field trip to the top of the Skyland Hotel one night and let you guys get a real world look at it. You cannot look north from the Skyland Hotel at nighttime due to the lights at the Triangle Stop there at Seventh and Main. They're worse than the lights at the football field. So that we do have that that issue. I I very feel very strongly about leakage up and and the trespass aspects of it. Not as much about the total lumens on site, except as it affects that. Like lumens on site, we all want. Well, we'll continue.
I was gonna, this may, I I haven't heard this question asked, but there's this reference to the seventy-five percent reduction for clarity and maybe to illuminate the conversation. Is that seventy-five percent? What was desired or from the IES standard for? So so the desired or designed? Okay, so that so so there's two kind of references.
Yeah, that's.
This is what they wanted. It would create, it would require seventy-five production in that, seventy-five percent reduction in that. And a thirty percent reduction from what I IES. Thirty percent. But didn't IES?
That's why the performance.
Provide input on the model light ordinance? Right. I thought LZ four was for like the Times Square commercial districts is. Yeah. There's a huge range within those. Yeah.
Can I toss in something quickly? You notice I've been quiet, surprisingly? This has been useful, because I think it points out the need for education on this ordinance. There's a reason why the international organization is called Dark Skies. It's not called Dark Streets. It's not called Bring Out the Criminals. It's oriented toward the light that we sent up that's being wasted. And that right now is keeping me from seeing the Milky Way, except at the corner grocery store. I used to be able to see the Milky Way when I moved here seven years ago, not now. And the other part is, I forget who, somebody made a comment about my spousal unit. We'll go to the most highly illuminated store, just psychologically. This isn't designed to shut down commercial sites that need lighting. This is designed particularly for those wee hours of the morning. We're not a twenty-four hour town. Something that shocked the hell out of me when I moved here. Nobody's open twenty-four hours. I had a hard time adjusting to that. But between ten and six, ten PM to six AM, nobody's out. Let's be honest, folks. If we can reduce wasted lighting during that time, astronomers, people like me who like to look up, can look up. We can see things. We're all happy. So I'm, again, this has been really helpful for me. Not only keeping my jaw a little bit unexercised, but just hearing some of the objections that we'll need to address as this is rolled out. Okay, some learned responses.
And this staff is going to have to enforce this. Good luck.
Yep. And oh, there have been a lot of compromises along the way to make it simple.
Not the word on.
And it is simple. It it really is simple. It's something I can understand. And I'm a banker. If a banker can understand something, anybody can understand something. You can quote me on that.
So thank you to the 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 draft ordinance committee. Thank you to Gary and Debbie. We really appreciate your your knowledge and your input and your
Thanks for listening.
Your your volunteering to to help us with this issue. Peter has his keys in his hand, so we are going to be adjourned.
Do we not have one item on the agenda yet? The the comp plan update?
We do, but I am, I am comfortable, I know, I've got staff who want to go watch a football game. So the comp plan update? I I can provide that moving forward. So basically, I I I want to check in with you all on the components of our existing comp plan. And as we push out an RFP to request for a consultant to assist us, I want to make sure, are there other areas of that plan that you'd like to see us add to and or focus on? So feel free, this, I can share this presentation with you, flip through it, see what you see and be thinking about that. You're going to email that presentation to us? I'll email it. And then we can provide comments back directly to you. That'd be great.
Okay, move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.